Call the order for Watertown City Council meeting for December 1st of 2025. Because our fallback option of Councilman Shuddy, who's always reliable in giving the prayer, is gone, I will give a short prayer to start this meeting. So everyone, please rise. Dear God, we ask for your presence, your guidance. In this meeting tonight, as we try to do what's best for the city of Watertown, we ask for wisdom to do what's right and the courage to take action when that is needed. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Jurins? Okay. Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Hoyer?
Here.
Holene?
Here.
Mormon?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. Chair will actually first call for any conflict of interest tonight. Councilman Hoyer?
I'll be abstaining from 12A.
Anyone else? All right, I'll take action to approve tonight's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Allen, second by Councilman Peters. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to open forum. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council on something that is not on the agenda, please let me know. I'll close the open forum, and we will go straight into item 9A, which is a 2025 bridge inspection report to council. For starters, we will go to our city engineer, Justin Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. The city has, 13 bridges are inspected through the program, through the DOT. We do about half every year. So this year, CDI inspected seven bridges. And as part of the program, Chris Brozek from Civil Design, Inc., is here to present counsel with a summary. With that, I'll let Chris take over.
All right, thank you very much.
Good evening. Chris Brozek with Civil Design out of Brookings, South Dakota. As Justin said, we inspect your guys' infrastructure, bridges specifically within the city of Watertown every year, half of those being inspected on the even years and half on the odd years. The city of Watertown has 13 total bridges that are inspected every single two years. This year, with seven of those being inspected. Any bridge is any structure that's greater than 20 feet in length, so anything less than that does not get included within this inspection. Also, what's included is a box culvert. Box culverts are these rectangular cells that act similar to a pipe culvert, but that constitute that greater than 20 foot in length. And so those qualify as well. So those are inspected as part of this program. In addition to doing any field inspections, we also prepare reports, detailed inspection findings, defects, any recommended repairs or rehabilitation and/or future replacement down the road that we relay to the city staff and provide those recommendations in addition to the inspection reports. We also meet with city staff to go through those inspection reports in detail to make sure they understand what our recommendations are moving forward and so that any immediate items can be addressed in short order. That meeting was held back on November 17th with city engineering and street department staff. And just as a reminder too, for everyone, these are specifically related to the structure itself and not meant to look at drainage or any type of improvements thereof, mainly just the structural integrity of that bridge and any safety components related to the structure. So this next slide is a map showing every structure within the city of Watertown. Again, 13 total on the list. This year, again, doing seven of those structures, four of them being bridges, three of those being concrete box culverts. Overall, the condition of those seven structures inspected, as you can see, three are listed as being in good condition, three being in fair, and then one structure being in poor condition, which I'll get into in a little bit more detail. One other caveat too is, this year, we had two structures added to the list that, for whatever reason, when the development was constructed specifically just north of Pelican Lake, there were two structures there that actually meet that bridge criteria that weren't originally on the list, for whatever reason, when that developer came in and did that development and didn't transfer to the city. So we got that corrected here this year and are now going to be performing those inspections within the cycle. And that also means that any future replacement or anything like that, that would need to be done years down the road, you guys qualify for that because you're meeting the inspection requirements. So I'm going to briefly go into a summary of each bridge, so you guys can get a little bit more information on what we see and what some of our recommendations are. So this first bridge is located at the north side of Lake Pesca. This is on North Lake Drive, and it was built in 1931, so it served its time very well. This is the one structure that is in poor condition. And as you can see from a couple of the photos, there is just quite a bit of deterioration, some scaling, spalling, mainly at the ends of the box culverts, and some areas of cracking that have some efflorescence and stalactites. That's that bottom left picture where you see some of that yellowish to whitish paste that's coming out of a crack, and that's showing signs of that internal deterioration of the box. But overall, this box is still performing, you know, in generally fair condition. When you look at it from the underside of the roadway, it's more or less once you get to the edges of the roadway and beyond that we're seeing a lot more of this deterioration. And so this structure has, you know, certainly served its life well. And looking forward, you know, over the next, call it five to 10 years, this would be probably the next structure on the city's radar that would be looking for future replacement just because of its condition and its age. Nothing that requires any immediate load posting or weight restriction on this. It's still safe to carry regular legal loads. Just want you guys to be aware of its current condition and what it may look like over the next few years. The next structure is located, I'm having a hard time reading that, actually, 17th Avenue Southwest. And this is one of the ones that's located just north of Pelican Lake that we recently added to the inspection program. That wasn't originally in there. It was built in 2008. The good news is, everything looked really good on this structure. It's a precast box culvert, just a couple minor maintenance items that were relayed to the street department. And then this is the other structure on Pelican Lane, also just north of Pelican Lake, that we added to the inspection list, also a precast concrete box culvert. And again, very minor maintenance items that require addressing on this one, and specifically a little bit of undermining of the concrete sidewalk just to the east of the box on the south side of the roadway, but nothing major that, you know, is unsafe for the traveling public or the pedestrian traffic at this time, just something that should get addressed before it gets to that point. This structure, 181170, is on Third Avenue Northwest and crosses the Big Sioux River. This is your newest bridge that was completed just a few years ago. And overall, no major items on this one, as you would expect, really just a couple areas of minor settlement where the concrete sidewalk joins with the sidewalk carrying the bridge, the bridge carrying the sidewalk, I should say. Those are pretty common. You're going to see some areas of minor settlement like that at bridge ends, specifically at those sidewalk ends where, over time, things will tend to settle out. Nothing major, but as that continues to develop, the city may want to address that tripping hazard as it continues to develop. The next one is 181171 on West Kemp. This is one of your older structures. I believe it's actually a historic structure. It's very unique in nature and very aesthetically pleasing. Overall, again, this structure's in fair condition, and for its age, it's actually holding up quite well. Probably the bigger item that we addressed with the street department, which the street department's already taking some steps to address this, is some of the pedestrian safety improvements that we've recommended right at the corners of the bridge. The middle photo on the, towards the left, shows where the sidewalk kind of drops off the edge of the bridge. And so we're recommending some improvements to the railing and any backfilling or infilling of those areas just to help with safety improvement of the pedestrian 181175, that one's located on Fourth Avenue Southwest, and this one also crosses the Big Sioux. Built in 1977, this one's starting to show some age to it. Generally speaking, just some minor maintenance items. But this one, we do what's called a deck delamination survey, where we do a steel chain drag across the deck, and we look for areas of hollow popping on that deck where chlorides have potentially contaminated the deck by getting in through cracks and causing that steel to corrode internally, causing that steel to expand and pop that surface of the concrete. And over time, that tends to accelerate. And that's what we're starting to see here. It looks very normal to the naked eye when you drive across it, and no concerns there. Just something that, in the future, as this continues to progress, something to consider for future preservation work to rehab the deck and help protect that to extend the service life, things we've talked to engineering and the street department on as well. 196190 is your longest bridge on 20th Avenue Southeast. This one had a couple little issues, mainly on the deck joints, where some of the deck joints have started to fail. That middle picture, towards the left side of the slide, shows some air gaps between the bridge end. This would be looking along the joint transfers to the roadway. And mainly what that means is moisture's getting in through that crack, dirt and debris's getting in through that crack. And over time, that will tend to cause advanced deterioration to the beams and other such devices, but nothing major yet. But if we let this go for years on end, that will advance the deterioration of the bridge. So sealing those joints properly again is important to keep that moisture and debris out. The second photo as well, the bottom one, at the bottom of the slide there in the middle of the page, that one has an elastinamaric bearing pad under one of the steel bearings of the beams. That has started to slide its way out. For whatever reason, it's lost adhesiveness to the other elements, and so we want to keep that in place from moving any further. So we've also addressed that with the street department. Again, neither one of these items are safety issues for the traveling public, just items that require maintenance work to maintain service life of the bridge and maximize that service life. Second to last slide here just provides really an overall summary that we provide to the engineering department and street department to give them really a high-level view of just, on a single sheet of paper, these are all of our recommendations for each bridge. This is that overall condition rating of each bridge, and whether it's good, fair, or poor, and an overall value to that, as well as its location, any required load postings, if there were any, and any changes to load posting, if there are any. Fortunately, you guys don't have any load-posted structures, and moving forward, we don't recommend any changes to that because of the overall generally good condition that you guys have. With that, a lot of information, but I'll gladly take any questions you guys have for me.
Thank you. We will open it up for questions. Councilman Hoyer?
I guess my only question, looking at it, and just purely for an education sake, with Third Avenue being built in 2022, you know, I guess for me personally, I would kind of expect it to be closer to like a nine, since it's basically brand new. It's a three-year-old bridge.
Yep.
Why do we see that kind of deterioration to a seven on that, but then our bridge built in like 1931 is at a six?
Great question. So the one on Third Avenue, we start everything from, it's on a scale from zero to nine. So nine's being absolutely pristine, perfect, not a single crack, nothing. When I first did an initial inspection, when it was first constructed, it started at an eight, I believe, just because you already had some starts of cracks within the deck and with some other components. And there's some other construction-related defects, I'll call it. So nothing, very rarely do we ever actually give it a nine. And if it is a nine, it would be for a very short period of time, just the way they do the rankings. And then from going to an eight to a seven is just because of the more frequent cracking we saw in the top of the deck. But I would expect this structure to stay at a seven in that good condition for many years. It's just the way it scored at the top end, being very critical with how it scored. And so we have to drop those usually fairly quickly, but over a period of time. I wouldn't expect that to continue dropping drastically over the next 10 years even. I mean, it should stay in that good condition for many years moving forward. In terms of the other one on Kemp, that one likely has probably seen some rehab over the years, and maybe it was in more critical shape. They were able to do some rehab to that bridge to get it into better condition, and that's what's kept it in its better state.
Any follow-up, Councilman?
I don't think so. I just always get critical of concrete work these days. It just seems like we never can hold up to the same standard those WPA sidewalks do. And I hope somebody smarter than me can figure out why do those last so long, but we can't seem to not crack these days.
City Manager Steger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brozek, a question regarding the sufficiency rating that was used in 2024 versus the condition ratings used in 2025, and how do we calibrate the two?
Another good question. I didn't touch on that. A lot of new changes came out within the last year that we now have to go through. And so there was actually quite a bit of additional field work that we had to do this year to update information within the federal highways database. And one of those components was the sufficiency rating. We no longer actually use the sufficiency rating. So you'll see on the map that some of those structures that we didn't inspect have that sufficiency rating still. And a lot of the, and then all the structures we did this year just have a condition rating, mainly because we don't calculate that sufficiency rating anymore. They strictly look at just overall structure condition rating. And so we always had a overall condition rating before, but we always based it on that sufficiency rating. The sufficiency rating was based on a scale of zero to 100. That took basically the same components into account when they calculated that. But now it's more of a, kind of in layman's terms, an easier way to provide that condition to anybody and have them understand it.
Do you have the equivalent overall condition rating for the 2024 inspections?
We do not. We'll have those next year when we actually perform those inspections, and then those would update all of the sufficiency ratings so that you don't see sufficiency rating anymore in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
Two really good questions that were questions I had as well. But the other question I had is about excluding the two new bridges that you inspected this time, did any of the condition ratings change from the last time these bridges were inspected? And I guess I'm just thinking that obviously next year, when you get rid of the sufficiency ratings and come up with a condition rating, it would be useful to know, are the sevens now sixes? You know, is something happening there? So just kind of overall, are we holding our own? That's my question.
Sure. I don't have the previous numbers right in front of me, but I can say with fairly good confidence that almost every single one of the bridges I looked at this year, nothing major changed. Usually how we rate that overall rating is based on your deck condition, the superstructure or your beams, and your substructure or your foundations. And those are the three main components that go into that overall score. The only one that I would say probably dropped is honestly the new one, where we went from that eight condition being very, very good to a seven, which is good. The rest of them probably held their own pretty well, just going off of memory.
And then one follow-up question. Legal loads just means that they can carry what they're supposed to be able to carry, right?
Correct. Like anything from your regular pickup truck up to an 80,000 pound truck semi, that's handling. Any, I don't know if you guys even have, you know, special permit loads that need to come through town, but those would be the only loads that need to come through town, but those would be the only nuances where, you know, we see that more on the interstate system or the heavy highway system where you get special permit loads like wind turbines and things like that. But I'm guessing in the city limits, you're not seeing that. So any, any load would be considered typical and not restricted, so.
Thank you.
Councilman Mormon.
Just a quick question, just curious, like the bridges that are out by, out by Pelican in the CACs addition where you have just stagnant water essentially, are those supposed to last longer than if they're like the ones along the Big Sioux River where you got flowing water going under them or does it not really matter?
Generally speaking, it doesn't really matter. It's more dictated on structure type, the, the environmental conditions, not necessarily whether there's flowing water or not flowing water. And I say that lightly because some structures may depend more on that. Say you got an older timber bridge that has timber piling in the water and that water's fluctuating constantly, well, you're getting a lot more oxygen exposure to the timber, which is going to feed off the bacteria and cause advanced deterioration. Whereas if you get a timber bridge that's always underwater, it's not going to get oxygen to it. So it's not going to deteriorate as fast. So it's very site dependent and it, it can have a small impact, but it's very much dependent more on the environment and the structure type than it is whether it's got flowing water.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Item ten A is an approval of the two thousand and twenty-six Watertown Police Officers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement addendum. For this, we'll go to our city manager, Alan Steger.
Thank you, mayor. Before you tonight is the first of three agreements that you will be seeing this month. As part of the annual negotiation with each of the three unions, we negotiate the, the increase in wages year over year and then one additional item that each union is able to bring forward, as well as an item that the management team at the city desires to bring forward for the union consideration. What we have before you tonight is the agreement or the addendum to the agreement with the Watertown Police Officers Association. The reason why you have this one tonight but not the other two is this was the first one that we had completed the negotiation on. We have tentatively agreed to essentially the same terms and conditions with the remaining two unions and you should be seeing those agreements on the December fifteenth agenda. A summary of what we have agreed to is an overall wage increase of three and a half percent in twenty twenty-six, which includes a one point five percent cost of living and an advancement of one step on the grid, which is an additional two percentage points for a total increase of three and a half percent. To put that into perspective, I do want to call out that the city did not receive an increase in the health insurance plan for twenty twenty-six and therefore we've not changed or increased the employee contributions for the health insurance plan either. And that really, really sweetens the three and a half percent here as our employee base will not be giving up part of the increase by paying higher health insurance premiums in twenty twenty-six. Also, as requested by the union, we are increasing slightly the match that we make on the supplemental employee retirement plan by, I believe, twenty-five dollars per month for participants who, who fully participate. And finally, from the city standpoint, we've changed language regarding employee compensation if, for instance, we close one city department but not another one. In the past, the language required that there be equal treatment across all city employees. In this case, our, our preference is not to close or shut down any city facility, but to require that those hours be made up or covered with paid time off or vacation time. If there is a significant event that does result in the closure of one particular facility, we will grant essentially that additional time paid to all employees across the city. I'll stand by for any questions you might have on the agreement.
Thank you. Counsel, can I get a motion to approve this addendum? Motion made by councilman Allen. Seconded by councilman Peters. Any questions or comments, counsel? Councilman Mormon.
Just wondering, like on the wage matrix, we have fifteen steps in it. I know we have employees that would be higher than step fifteen. What would their raises be then?
They would have the one point five percent COLA. We've actually discussed potentially doing something special for the handful of employees at step fifteen. Looking at the data, we actually don't have very many at the step fifteen. And one of the things, as we went through the negotiation this year, is I've kept the door open with all three unit, unions that as I learned what our practices have been and as they have desires throughout the year, it's going to be an ongoing conversation so that we can look at it in the future. But the short, simple answer is there's very few people in that situation and we may bring just a special request forward for the, the five or six that, that are maxed out on the grid.
Follow-up?
Yeah, I would appreciate that. You know, just, just looking at it, to me, it just seems like, well, it's just simply calculating out five or ten more steps or whatever to do that. So that way we don't leave the men or women that have dedicated the bulk of their life to working for the city to now taking, being short-changed on the raises.
Any further questions or comments? All right, we will go to a vote. If you're in favor of approving this addendum, you'll say aye and oppose nay. Finance officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Pauline?
Aye.
Mormon?
Aye.
All in favor?
Motion carries. Item ten B is an approval of a professional services agreement for the reconstruction of taxiway Alpha with Helms and Associates Corporation in the amount of five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, one hundred, five hundred and forty-five, one hundred thou, thousand dollars, one hundred and six, whatever, roughly five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We'll go to our city manager, Steger, who will do a better job than I just did.
Thank you, mayor. Hopefully I do a better job, but I didn't bring my notes on this one. This is a project that is in the airport long-term improvement plan to reconstruct one of the taxiways. This is a federal and state grant match program. I believe on this one, the city portion is two and a half percent that we will pay on this agreement and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Counsel, can I get a motion to approve this agreement? Motion made by councilman Hoyer. Seconded by councilman Mormon. Thank you. Any questions or comments, counsel? We'll go to just a voice vote. If you're in favor of approving this agreement, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item ten C is an approval of a change order, number one, final for the two thousand and twenty-five Neighborhood Street Reconstruct on Second Avenue Northeast with DeBoer Construction and Company Incorporated for an increase of roughly sixty-four thousand dollars for a new contract price of roughly one point two million dollars. City engineer Peterson.
Thank you, mayor. This is the final change order for Second Avenue. The project includes water main, storm sewer and sanitary sewer. So the water main portion is paid by WMU. The change order is about thirty-three thousand of that is WMU shares for additional traffic control and removals based off the water main. And then the thirty-one, about thirty-one thousand is for additional removals and that's the city's portion of that. Overall, the, the city total is just under seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the change order? Motion made by councilman Peters. Seconded by councilman Mormon. Counsel, any deliberations? All right. All those in favor of approving this change order, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item ten D is an, okay, so items ten D and E are very, are related. So we will be discussing them together, but voting upon them separately. Item ten D is an approval of a bid award to sell the two thousand and eighteen Spalding Asphalt Hot Box in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars to Sanitation Products Incorporated. Item ten E is an approval of a bid award via Sourcewell Bid for two new unused Falcon Asphalt hot boxes from Sanitation Products in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. We'll go to city manager Steger to explain these two.
Thank you, mayor. The product that we are looking at here is called a hot box and it's essentially a hopper that, that has a heating unit in it to allow us to manage hot asphalt for roadway repairs. This will actually allow us to, to have two of those units in our fleet to enhance our ability to do more timely asphalt repairs in the future. The first item, item D, is actually a bid that we, we put in place to offer for sale the existing hot box that we have. We didn't want to just merely trade this in on a Sourcewell contract as we would have no way of knowing what a fair value for that particular hot box is. So we opened it up to a bid. The vendor of the new hot box made a proposal of twenty-four thousand, which was the highest bid received, so we recommend accepting it. I'll stand by and, and take item D after you, item E after you vote on D.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I'll take an action to approve the bid award. Motion made by councilman Mormon, seconded by councilman Peters. Counsel, I will allow questions or comments on both of these items, ten D and E, but any questions now? Councilman Hoyer?
I'm just curious with us getting some new ones coming up too. What is the average lifespan on one of these vehicles, just with it being a twenty-eighteen and already going? Are we going to expect then to see these go that same period of time? Get about eight years out of it?
I don't know the answer to that. I would, would think we'd get a longer life. I think these are actually higher capacity boxes as well.
Yeah, I saw they're two different lengths, but yeah, just wondering what's triggering us to sell off the twenty-eighteen instead of just adding two more and then having three hot boxes?
I, I think we would struggle having crew sizes to be able to run three.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel, I feel okay just going to a voice vote on that. All those in favor of item ten D and approval, the approval of the bid award, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item ten E, can I get a motion on this bid award? Motion made by councilman Allen. Seconded by councilman Hoyer. Same thing, any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll go to a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the bid award, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item eleven A is a first reading of an ordinance to supplement the twenty twenty-five budget for various departments and projects, state and federal grant appropriations and budget line item transfers. Finance officer Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Yes, it's that time each year where during the month of November, I reach out to departments and have them look closely at their budget and make sure we're going to stay within those limits. Once they review it, we discuss maybe some needs that they have and just kind of a quick overview. Once that's established, it comes before the council as a supplement to the budget. There's three parts to this. The first part is just by ordinance supplementing. The second part is any federal and state grants are kind of considered an automatic. We have the revenue that offsets the expenditure and then if we are doing any transfers between departments of budget funds. It's, it's fairly straightforward. It's all broke down by fund and then division and account. It's all in here. If there's any specific questions, I can answer them, but I feel like it's a, it's a relative adjustment to the budget that we've seen in past years. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a first reading. No action is necessary, but questions are encouraged. Councilman Peters.
I just have a question on the, on the line items, just random thought here. So when we see like machinery and equipment like for the wellness center, what would that, is that for like new fitness equipment or what would that be? I know it's a super detailed question. I'm just trying to understand like what's all put in that line item?
So that can be various things. It doesn't have to be specifically like the fitness equipment. That machinery equipment is probably more some actual mechanical equipment. We did have quite a few updates that needed to happen. Some of the systems are getting a little bit older. So that, that would go into that line item.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments, counsel? Councilman Hoyer?
Just looking at it to, for, granted, I'm no accountant. Under some of these where we have things like banking services and those being like forty-five thousand dollars, I'm just curious, what are those? Is that like paying for an accountant or is it like POS related?
So that, yep, so that is our credit card fees, the situation that we just had where we've passed that resolution to put those credit card fees back onto the consumer. That was us paying for those. So the, the banking service line is all credit card fees.
Okay.
Councilman, city manager Steger?
I'll just make a couple of general comments. First of all, when we do the supplementals, we are looking at only the items that have had significant overspending. So all of the items that have been underspent throughout the year don't require a supplement. There are really three areas within the city that we had some spend overruns that, that are, are in this supplemental request. The first one is, we've talked about in the past, is the credit card fees. And we have remedied that by moving to a new, new supplier for the credit card services as well as doing some patron billbacks for some of the fees going forward. Secondly, the budget for twenty twenty-five significantly over, significantly underestimated overtime, especially in public safety, without really a plan to run at those overtime levels. So we overran overtime. I think our overtime levels are fairly low, so we've adjusted that in the twenty-six budget to go back to a more normalized level of overtime. And then finally, as our CFO mentioned, the wellness center is, is starting to age as a building and we've had some unplanned expenditures in that building that, that were addressed this year. I will say some of them were offset by some insurance payments that we had previously received related to the roof that covered some other items. But it is something to keep in mind as we go, go forward, the maintenance costs in our aging buildings will start to creep up and consume more of our budget going forward.
Thank you. Councilman Peters?
I just got a couple more questions. When I was looking at this, this morning on the ice arena, I've got two questions here. One, there's consultant services there. I think it says nine thousand if I'm reading that right.
That's correct.
What would that be?
That was when we had Gary Weckworth help during some of the pre-operation planning. Yep.
Okay. And the second one is refunds and reimbursements are on the bottom. What would we, what are we fronting that we're reimbursing?
So that is what we do when we have our agreement with Shamrocks as far as their payment for the alcohol and concessions, their portion.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Yep.
Councilman Hoyer?
I just want to make sure I, I have this understood a hundred percent. So like with the banking services now, this is going to be a supplement that we will pay this year and then going forward, we shouldn't need it. This is just correcting the issue we had in the last year.
This is just correcting, correct.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you. City manager Steger, was there a reason why the overtime was so? Thank you. Uh, City Manager Steger, was there a reason why the overtime was so high in the past or not covered, or what, what accounts for that discrepancy?
I'm not sure how the budget was prepared for 2025. However, when I looked at it, one of my first conversations with Chief Roland was how can you operate with that low of an overtime budget, understanding how the staffing works within fire? And I think it was, it was something that was maybe forced upon our team that they didn't really buy into, but as you look at it, we run about 5% overtime in public safety, and it's real tough to run anything less than that without increasing staffing.
People just don't know to keep all their emergencies within 5% of our budget. That's Chief Roland in the back saying sorry. Uh, no reason to apologize, Chief. And, um, with the Wellness Center, just, uh, the things that we're aware of, the roof, the ventilation, you know, heating, cooling, things like that. And, uh, we're still figuring out a little bit on some of those warranties, aren't we? Or do we have that all figured out? I thought that there was still some, some question as far as.
Yeah, I don't.
That was with the ice arena. Yeah, well, I knew about that, but.
Yeah, I don't think there are warranties on, um, the Wellness Center. However, we were able to get some additional life out of the HVAC system in the pool by engaging with a different contractual firm that was able to give us some advice on how to better run it. So we did push out the life of that system by, by perhaps a year or two.
That's what I was wondering about. So thank you.
Councilman Allen?
Uh, City Manager Steger, um, my assumption is that, um, the assessment that we're doing on our facilities, that we said, you know, we need to do that assessment, that that's going to maybe provide us with a greater lead time in terms of things. Now, I, I get it that we're not ever going to know, I mean, stuff breaks, right? I mean, if you've bought a new appliance in the last decade, it probably didn't work anymore. You know, it's like the concrete that Councilman Hoyer was talking about. Having just done a bunch of concrete work, it's all cracked at my house, so I get that. But I assume that the whole reason for doing that assessment is going to provide us with more of a lead time to know that there aren't any real big surprises maybe coming. And it might help us make decisions about facilities going forward, whether maintaining them is worth the expense. You know, I, I just, I know we have some facilities within the city that we're probably, you know, we're losing a lot of money on, and our usage is not justifying it. That be accurate?
That is absolutely accurate. The, the facility assessment, which will be completed next year, will give us a little more guidance in terms of specifically which systems and which facilities. In the absence of that, I would recommend that we, we budget a general percentage because, as you stated, we don't know what's going to break in our aging facilities. And frankly, as I'm getting up to speed in this job, there isn't a week that goes by that I don't discover another facility I didn't know we owned. And, and so it, it does have the capability of being quite extensive in the future, just maintaining what we've got.
Councilman Allen, did you have any more?
Just to follow up to that, then I, I think from my perspective, it pushes us to maybe get some of those facilities off of our ledger. If we're just throwing good money after bad, it doesn't seem justified to me. So, thank you.
Councilman Peters?
Just to follow up on what Councilman Allen said. The bridge presentation was actually, I was thinking a lot about how we can start to do this with some of our equipment in the city. And the, the hot box just came up as an item that we bought eight years ago, six years ago, whatever it was. To have a, a Gantt chart of sorts that shows, you know, what we're going to be coming up against would help our capital planning process. And I know it's going to be really hard to put everything down on a piece of paper and start to itemize it accordingly. But what we're talking about, where to dedicate our dollars, it isn't a true representation of where we should be focusing. We've got other things that we need to replace.
You are absolutely correct. And as we went through the 10-year CIP plan, that is all based upon dates, not condition or value or use of the equipment that is, is planned to be replaced. So as we continue to refine that CIP planning process, that's absolutely what we need to look at.
Councilman Hoyer?
Yeah, yep, I had one more. Just looking at it closer. The question that I had is just, um, I noticed it specifically on the Aquatic Center and then on the zoo. But I'm just curious, how do we traditionally budget our utilities for some of these facilities? I'm just a little surprised to see them spike up like that in just those alone. Like if it was across the board, I'd go, oh, it's a utility rate. And so I was just wondering what it was.
Yep. So both of those locations did actually have water, right? The pool had a leak and there was a water main break. So yes, I would say normally our, our utilities are pretty straightforward. This was a little bit of a, issues came up. So otherwise, I would say utilities are pretty straightforward.
And then the electricity with the zoo?
I will have to, I'll have to look into that one, but yeah.
Just because I, you know, again, I would think that'd really just be the same every year. I can understand if a water main broke and we didn't quite catch it right away, what happened there, but, okay.
Councilman Allen?
Did we fix the pool leak?
Dusty?
The response in the back of the room was, was from Director Rodick from Parks and Rec, and the answer was, we hope so.
Okay. Yeah. The, the only other thing I would say is that, um, you know, it, as I recall, our very first meeting as a new council, when we were sitting here, we approved a supplement. It was a mid-year supplement. And that seemed to me to be unusual. And it was for the police department to, to do a million dollar contract, I think is what it ended up being. And, and I understand that those kinds of things happen. But it seems like that doing mid-year supplements like that makes end-of-year supplements maybe a little trickier for us. Is that accurate or not? Am I, am I worried about something I shouldn't worry about?
So normally the process is when we've done something more mid-year, it's because some of those actions were approved, and it's more of the housekeeping side of it. So then as those departments are reviewing their budget for the last half of the year, they can see that that supplement was already made. So then now when they're looking at it again in that November timeframe, they kind of know what the new budget is. So, so it's more, we would only ever do that probably mid-year when we had some really specific things and to kind of just keep the books clean.
And I recognize that was an exceptional situation. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Mormon?
Just a question, question for City Manager Steger. Some of these supplements that we've had to vote on throughout the year, I just want to give you an opportunity to inform the, the citizens of our town. Are there some areas where we've been able to really save a lot of money that was budgeted in certain areas that we didn't spend? So when a large request, you know, in the midstream, in the middle of the year comes up, yeah, we have to fund that. But are there areas where it's just like, look, we're, we're not spending hardly anything here that we thought we were?
There are actually many areas where we have underspent, which we don't need to do a supplement to adjust for those. The team has been really great on materials and supplies, and the team has also been really great on backfilling open positions. And as, as you might recall, actually taking overall headcount down year over year, and we've moved positions around within the city. So there are many areas like that, Councilman Mormon, that we have adjusted expenses down.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Thank you. We'll see that back at the next meeting. Item 12A is an application for a new retail liquor restaurant license to Lollapalooza LLC, doing business as The Local at 16 West Kemp Avenue. We'll go to Finance Officer Bob Zine.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, in front of the council is the application for the new retail restaurant liquor license. All fees have been paid. Notice has been published. The location has also been approved for alcohol. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. This requires a public hearing. I will open one now. I'll close the public hearing, go to council action. Can I get a motion to approve the application? Motion made by Councilman Peters. Seconded by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any deliberations? All right, let's go to a vote, a vote. All those in favor of approving the application, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries. Item 12B is an approval of a five-year lease agreement with Clyde Strickers for the grazing rights on city-owned pasture land in the amount of $70 per acre with an increase in rent every two years. City Manager Steger?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this five-year lease agreement is a renewal with the tenant, Clyde Strickers. The amount agreed upon is $70 per acre, and that is based upon a, a land and rent survey that South Dakota State University conducts periodically. And this is the, uh, average rate for pasture land of this type in the area. This particular parcel is property that we own north of Watertown. That was acquired years ago as part of a potential flood control project. We recommend approval.
Thank you. I'll pub, I'll open a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone who would like to testify? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Can I get a motion to approve the agreement? Motion made by Councilman Mormon. Seconded by Councilman Allen. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Councilman Peters?
Do we ever take this out for bid? Does everybody have an opportunity to, to bid on this? And when does that happen? Because is, is this just a renewal?
Yeah, that, we, we did provide notice on this one, but we have other property that is currently actively out for bid with the airport property.
Okay. So this one was or wasn't?
We, we provided an intent to renew.
She's mouthing something to me?
Sorry.
City Attorney Carico?
Sorry, yes, this was where the tenant had the option of renewing, but we had to renegotiate the rent terms. We're not in the previous, so.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions, counsel? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries. Item 12C is a second reading of an ordinance amending Title VII of City Government, Chapter 7.01, City Limits and Datum Line. City Manager Steger?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading. The principal change affected by changes to Title VII dot 01 are to remove a roughly six-page meets and bounds legal description of the city of Watertown, and it, it replaces that legal description with a map that will be, be maintained by the City Engineers Office.
Thank you. Counsel, can I get a motion to approve this ordinance? Motion made by Councilman Hoyer, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any questions, comments? Councilman Hoyer?
Thank you for striking this. They would have taken a lawyer and an expert to understand what any of it meant. So thanks for cleaning this up and just getting a picture.
Thanks.
Any further comments? Motion is to approve the ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries. Item 13A is an approval of resolution establishing fees for city licenses, permits, administration, memberships, user fees, and other miscellaneous items. City Manager Steger?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is an annual process that we go through as a staff. This resolution, uh, it essentially allows us to change various fees that we have within the city. We look at it on an annual basis and bring forward the approval. There were some changes, but not many, uh, for 2026. As you look through the list, you can see it's pretty comprehensive. Not really anything that changed significantly that I would, would highlight from a magnitude of change standpoint, but what I will say is I challenged the staff as we went through this year, this year and asked for some consistency. In the past, we had inconsistent rates being charged across facilities for equal type of services. So we did do some cleanup there, and we will continue to look at trying to streamline this fee structure going forward as we look at it in future resolutions and, and future years.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution? Motion made by Councilman Mormon. Seconded by Councilman Peters. Counsel? Councilman Allen?
Yeah, I, I, uh, City Manager Steger and I had some conversation about this, this morning relative to that consistency, which I think there's kind of a wide variation in a few areas. And I applaud the effort to be consistent about it. It would also be helpful in the future to see where we're currently at. So here's the current fee structure, and here's where the changes are, because you can't really tell from this what was changed. And I, I understand there weren't major changes and, and, uh, you know, trust that a lot of it was cleanup and the other things that you were talking about, so. But it would be helpful in the future to kind of see, well, here's what we've decided to change. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Councilman Hoyer?
The only question I had, and it's only because I see them all stacked up on each other. So who sets the rate for our on-sale, off-sale, like liquor licenses and stuff, just because, you know, liquor is 1,500 for renewal. Package liquor is 500. Wine and cider is 500. But then malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine is 300, and then that's split with the state. Does that get dictated by state, or do we set those fees?
For the most part, state statute sets those fees. In some cases, state statute, for instance, the restaurant liquor license will set a minimum fee. But most of what you see in that section is coming right out of statutory language.
Okay, because I know, I believe we send off like 500 for, like wine and cider, for instance, that's one of the ones I deal with. And so 500 there and then 500 to the city, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And they dictate that 500 that the city's collecting?
They dictate the, the max amount. So we could charge less, but we're at the max.
Yeah, I've just, I was curious. I thought it was weird with the malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine, that that one's sitting at 300, but then the others are all 500.
Yep.
And I just was curious what dictated that.
Yep, the state law.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? We'll do a roll call vote on this one. Finance Officer Bob Zine?
Okay. Jerrance? Okay. Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Mormon?
Aye.
All in favor?
And Councilman Jerrance, just making sure you're not there. I think he might be gone, but.
I've.
Oh, thank you. Motion is unanimous in favor. Motion approves. Any city council member announcements? Councilman Hoyer?
Not so much an announcement, just kind of a question. Um, I don't know if we have any dates coming up at all. I know some, a little bit of small group movement has happened, but some of them, there hasn't been. Just kind of wondering where, where at with our affordability situation on housing and how that stuff's moving along in the other groups. I've emailed, but haven't gotten a response, and so just thought I'd ask here.
There's actually quite a bit going on with a housing steering group working through six different initiatives, and as, as that group put forward, they're really forming the charters of the committees, looking at the six areas between. I think it was, uh, early October when those groups came together and the end of the year. And so there is activity with, with all six of them.
Anything else, Councilman?
Okay. Oh, I'll do one shout out for somebody. Carnegie Market kicks off at the Heritage Museum this week on the 4th, and that'll run through Sunday. The times kind of vary, so go ahead, just pop online, take a look at it. But that's always such a super cool, charming event downtown, so. It'll be a little cold. Make sure you bundle up.
Councilman Mormon?
Just a quick question for City Engineer Justin Peterson. He and I had to discuss this a little bit earlier, but. this a little bit earlier. But I had a question asked to me this week, and I know other people in the community have asked it and are curious. With the discussion about the bridges, just wondering if there's any, if there has been any discussion or any discussion on timelines? The bridge near Menards that goes across Highway 212 and the cemetery there, there's lots of people concerned to the fact that there isn't any sidewalk or any, basically any pedestrian way for them to cross over that bridge other than walking in the lane of traffic. Do you know of any, anything that we would do, or is it all going to be at the state and federal level? And have you heard of any timelines or discussion on it?
That, that bridge is the DOT-controlled bridge. And I haven't heard of any timeline, anytime soon that that bridge is going to be replaced or updated, so.
Okay. Thank you. Then just one other quick shout out. Had the opportunity to attend Lake Area Technical College's Festival of Trees, their fundraiser. And I appreciate that opportunity. It was a wonderful evening. And at the end of the night, President Sanderson announced that approximately $192,000 had been raised for Lake Area Technical College at that event. So just appreciate everybody that showed up to that. And once again, I just say thanks for the invite to it.
Thank you. I have a quick question. Where do, where does the public go to sign up for alerts, in particular on snow plowing?
Actually going to WatertownSD.us forward slash snow. Will bring up a page with all related snow removal information, including the link to sign up for the text notifications.
So basically, type in city of Watertown, South Dakota, go there, search for snow, and then get the alert. I mention this because I received several calls over the weekend about plowing and some people getting their cars towed. And I think some of the confusion might be that we have switched recently, just last year, from streets and avenues to zones. So there's a little bit of a difference than it has been traditionally done. So I would encourage everyone to go sign up. I don't even remember where I got signed up, but I remember I got the alert and got my cars off the street. So, thank you. Anything else? Councilman Allen?
Yeah, I just want to add to Councilman Hoyer's promotion of the Carnegie Market. It's always a great time, a fun time, and they have lots of products for sale that can fill your wish list. And it's shopping local, which is a great thing, as the mayor has said many times. So I encourage you to get out, even if it is cold, it's fun. I would also do a shout out to Kay Solberg and the Watertown Business Group that brought forward a great holiday parade. I'm a little biased because my father was the grand marshal of the parade, but it was still a wonderful parade. And I thought the crowds were great, given the temperature and the snow. It was a lot of fun. So a shout out to that. Also, I want to give a shout out to the police department. And, you know, we think of the holidays as this great time, but we also know that lots of people, it brings up some, some struggles for a lot of people as well. And so the police department is starting the "Are you okay?" campaign. And I just want to say thank you for that, because I think it does make a lot of difference. We can ask people, are you okay? Are you doing okay? Because it can be a time of great depression for people. And so, not to be a Debbie Downer on it, because we love the holidays, but I do think it's a wonderful thing that you've done, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for reminding me, but people go shop local. Okay. City Manager report?
I'll be very brief. Sometime within the next 30 days, I'd like to go through, for the public's benefit, goals and objectives of the city manager's office, again, in four categories, and just recap what we've accomplished in the last five or six months. We have one more remaining meeting to clean up some loose ends on the 15th of December. We have a few topics that we are starting to gather for a potential work session, but I think that work session will be in, in the month of January to cover some street facility items, as well as a potential change to an animal control ordinance. With that, I'll just end by thanking our street department and our police and fire department. They had a pretty busy holiday weekend, dealing with the snow removal. And I, I think they did an exceptional job. They worked quite a few hours and responded to quite a few calls.
Thank you. I am not aware of any reason to go into executive session. So therefore, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman Mormon. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night, and God bless you, Watertown.